On Sunday, Officer Robert Clark, 42-year-old male, was killed in Georgia State Prison by inmate who made fashioned weapons to kill this inmate. I meant this officer. About a month ago, maybe two months ago, we had an inmate during an incident with the officers state to our management that he was going to kill one of our officers with made weapons. We're understaffed, we're working at about 60% on a daily basis, and that's scary. So, the reasons why we're here. We know nationwide there's a staffing issue in corrections, we know this. But our staff is volunteering to work overtime on their days off consistently, and we're getting it done. But the real issue here is what is Volusia County going to do so one of these men and women behind me doesn't end up being a victim? The inmates are getting more and more violent towards staff. We putting issue, we're putting things in place, but ultimately, we need more staff. We have five-year officers, some of them here now, who make 20 cents over the bottom pay. County has done a good job of moving the bottom pay, but we're not keeping our zero-to-seven year officers. That is the important thing for us. If we can't keep the talent that we're training, building, sending to college to learn and become a certified officer, we can never keep retention. So, we have looked, we've done our research, we know there was leftover money from the corrections budget. All we're asking is to take some of that and fix our retention so we can keep our zero-to-seven year officers. That's the one thing that's really going to help us in the future. Because if we can't keep staff, we're going to keep staying in the same situation. I spoke here a few years ago about some of the issues, it's only gotten worse. I don't want to take up much of your time because I've spoke before, but all of these officers are going to talk about the real issues that are happening. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. My name is Sergeant Dunn, and I've been employed with the Volusia County Division of Corrections for 10 years. And in those 10 years, what I noticed is that we as correction officers are rarely regard regarded as law enforcement. Even though we deal with the same killers, rapists, and drug dealers the police deal with, the only difference is they cash them and we keep them. While they, while they are recognized for their service, we're mostly forgotten. We work in an environment that few people are willing to work and for the public that knows nothing of, of what we do, and yet judges us for doing so. Yes, it, it's a choice, but we don't work in, but if we don't work it, who will? Day after day, we get up and we put our uniform on to go to work and be surrounded by people that don't like us sometimes, but all the times we have to remain professional. We wear many hats, not only am I a correction officer, but I am a counselor, EMT, and a teacher, but yet underappreciated. The public doesn't see the unsafe environment that we work, how much staff is being run to the ground because of lack of staff, and we voice our concerns and we are advised to manage our resources. They don't see or know that we work so much overtime. We see inmates and coworkers more than we see our own families. But that's okay, as long as we keep the bad people behind those bars so they can pretend they don't exist. We as a division are not asking for too much, we're simply asking to be paid what we are worth, we are asking to be recognized and acknowledged for our service.
Is Chris? Hello, everybody. My name is Abdel Vasquez, I live in Daytona Beach. I am a veteran with eight years of active duty service. I have been a correctional officer for over 18 years working at the Volusia County Jail. I am here today to make you aware of the things that are happening at the Volusia County Jail. Just to mention a few because three minutes is not long enough. Number one, morale is at the lowest point ever. Number two, we are short-staffed. And because of that, I will go to number three. Number three, we are overworked. In our working environment, short staff and overwork is a recipe for disaster. Now, I understand that you cannot hire people that don't want to work or are not qualified to do our job. But if you all had the slightest idea of the mental abuse we endure each and every day by our detainees, not to mention sometimes the administration, you would give us a better treatment. All that I'm asking you is to reward the correctional officers who like me are on the frontlines battling bad behavior on a daily basis with a better pay. Please stop treating us like the ugly ducks of the family. Thank you.
Good morning, y'all. I'm Sergeant Keating, I've been there about 10 years. I've worked all over, I've been intake, I've been on females, I've been with the males. At what point in time does something give? Just like you said, it's a recipe for disaster there. Are we waiting for liability? Are we waiting for somebody to die? Are we waiting for an inmate to die, an officer to die? Just because we can't respond? We're having people leave and leave and leave, we might lose 10 officers and get back five. They're going to other agencies. Why? Because of pay. The ball's in y'all's court.
Good morning. My name is Steve Bordeus. I'm a correctional officer for the Volusia County Department of Corrections. I'm reading a statement on behalf of a fellow correctional officer, Officer Enrique Cortez, who could not be present today due to being on duty at the jail. He states, "My name is Enrique Cortez, and I have been with the Volusia County Department of Corrections for a little less than two years. In that short period of time, I have been welcomed with open arms and truly built what I can call a family with the brothers and sisters of this department. I apologize for not being present at today's meeting. Please know that this topic is near and dear to my heart, and I appreciate my union representative speaking on my behalf. When I first started at the department, it was brought to my attention that we were desperately in need of staff. In prior years, it was uncommon to have units run with only one officer present, to have male officers on female units, or to have the inmates locked in their cells for extended periods of time. But now, this is the norm. I am an officer who has witnessed this firsthand. During a correction officer's trainee's first 21 days on the job, one typically will have three FTOs to mentor them. I had seven. This was due to understaffing and my original FTOs being needed elsewhere in the facility. You can say that having this many FTOs has made me a well-rounded officer, but for others, this might be detrimental to their learning as they enter the world of corrections. Fast forward to today, we are just as bad, if not worse. My post at the jail is ID and receiving or the intake area, the most high liability post in the institution. Due to the unpredictability of people, drugs, weapons, and other dangerous contraband that can be brought in. Intake is normally, excuse me, and properly run by a nine-person team. This includes five officers and four civilians. On a regular basis, we are down to two people, making our team seven people, leaving officers to do the civilian jobs. My role as a property officer and my daily tasks include, but are not limited to, getting inmates ready for court, coordinating transfers to and from other counties, states, and other facilities, and keeping records of all inmate property. On busy court days, we prepare and transfer upward of 125 inmates. Once they return, they come in groups of 30 to 40 individuals. Keep in mind, policy states that the maximum amount of inmates an officer may escort at once is 10. I am typically alone with 30 to 40 inmates with maybe one other officer to help. Recently, I was battered by an inmate. This incident could have been completely avoided if we had had the proper amount of officers at my post. With the way things are going now, it's only a matter of time that someone will get seriously hurt or killed. Who's going to be the one to explain to my family that I was hurt on a job because we didn't have enough officers to maintain a safe environment? We are constantly locking down inmates behind the doors in a 12-by-8-foot cell. When they are locked down, inmates spend upward of 18 hours a day in their cells without the ability to contact their lawyers, families, or even friends they've made within the cell blocks. Understandably, that could drive someone crazy, and that is when gruesome behaviors become present within the facility. Many officers at the Volusia County Department of Corrections love what they do, but in this economy, the pay is just not enough to live a regular life to support one's family. To ensure the safety of our officers, nurses, civilians, and inmates, we need to focus on staff retention and attracting new officers. The answer is our pay. In comparison to other law enforcement agencies in our area, we are so underpaid. If this continues, our situation will only worsen. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good morning, council members. My name is Sean Vanthoff, Port Orange. I currently employ the Volusia County Division of Corrections, and I've been in the county for six years. Our jail is at a critical breaking point. Staffing is dangerous levels, corrections officers are overworked and burnt out. The jail has only increased the workload for officers, like requiring 30-minute rounds for intake units with no additional support. The jail has 70-plus vacant positions, and we are losing officers faster than we can fill the already vacant positions. We have male officers working female housing units in dorms. We also have male corrections officers working the female mental health unit where incarcerated women are in a constant state of undress, a direct violation of Florida's model jail standards. Understaffed and overworked, correctional officers have made headlines across the nation. Those headlines include inmate escapes, correctional officers killed by inmates, and inmate riots. Volusia County will be the next in the headlines if nothing's done. Volusia County, staff should be paid for their worth working the job of two corrections officers. Officers, sorry, officers can't receive their allotted 20-minute break through the staffing levels. Once the minimum wage went to $15 an hour, there's no incentive to come work at the jail. Volusia County needs to do better in giving more incentive to work for corrections, like pay for experience and cash bonuses that other departments are doing for recruitment. Volusia County always falls short compared to surrounding counties with regards to pay for their officers. Volusia County hindered new applicants when the county established the nicotine policy for special-risk positions because the state of Florida implemented Florida Statute 112.18, commonly known as the Heart and Lung Bill. The Heart and Lung Bill does not state that the protected class must be nicotine-free. Volusia County implemented the nicotine policy of punishment for the protected classes getting the benefit they deserve. Applicants that want to come work for Volusia County are turned away for simply wanting to use nicotine products, which all other county employees use. If I was Volusia County, if, if Volusia County, if Volusia County was serious about looking to find new, new officers, I would hope that removing the nicotine policy would be a start. Staffing at the, staffing levels at the jail are not the responsibility of my fellow officers, it's the responsibility of the county to ensure the people of Volusia County are safe.
Good morning. I'm Officer Bill Batten, I'm employed at the Corrections for Volusia County Branch Jail. Throughout my three-and-a-half years, I've seen officer morale slowly but surely dip. I want to share with you how some things operate at the jail most recent months, and last six months has gotten worse. I started off working in the confinement unit alone. I've had over 100 inmates responsible for their care, custody, and control. My unit houses max inmates like murderers, rapists, pedophiles, et cetera. I also have two officer full restraint inmates due to them threatening staff, fighting staff, inmates with shanks or found weapons, inmates who have attempted escapes, inmates who pose threats by their behavior, unpredictable state of mental health. I've had also inmates with protective custody and inmates that require time in confinement for various rule violations. Imagine having to run this unit alone, nobody help, help with pulling inmates out of the block for outside court, having to supervise a nurse with medication, confinement mental health evaluations, getting inmates to the clinic, dentist, getting segregation rounds completed, getting GP rounds completed, getting inmates down to their attorneys or civilian staff, moving inmates to correct housings, feeding child, picking up trays and trash, and heaven forbid you have to use a bathroom. Imagine again doing all this here by yourself, would you feel safe? I along with others try our best to leave work exactly where we came into work, not hurt. This, this place has become unsafe. We as staff take too many shortcuts to run this jail because of upper senior staff wanting to hide their comfortable officers, offices while us officers work the floor and kill with the workload, and unrealistic expectations set forth by them. A lot of knee-jerk reactions to isolated incidences cause and create more workload for us. We just don't have the staff. There has been times where only five staff members are trying to pad down over 60 inmates in the rec yard. Again, does that sound safe? Some upper senior staff will not be seen or heard of all day long. The day will, the building will run super thin on bodies, officers confer to system throughout the day, and only two sergeants and shift commander will come around and help. We have constantly run the building on lockdown due to staff shortages and officers' callouts and vacation and various reasons. Some lieutenants will reach out to senior staff and share with them how short we are, and they clearly don't care, they will not come in. Heaven forbid them having to give up their days off like us officers do on a weekly basis. We have emailed for help, we have basically begged for help on numerous occasions, yet we're still being ignored. Officers have been spit on, slapped, bitten, headbutted, punched, kicked, and threatened numerous times by inmates. Your sons and daughters are not safe, they have to come to our jail. We do not have the manpower to effectively look after your loved ones while they're in our custody. We have turned to putting male officers to watch females in dorms, wings, and hospital duty. How easily could that turn into a sexual assault allegation or worse? Inmates are finding assaulting each other more rapidly due to overcrowded blocks with inmate population. Many more officers will leave here in the next few months, and it'll get worse. I feel like someday an officer will get hurt due to an inmate. So again, in conclusion, would you let your son or daughter work here under these conditions? If you wouldn't want them to work here, ask yourself, why should we? You all as a council have certain abilities and you're highest positioned to assist and assist us in finding a solution with this request. If not, understand, you'll just be another level higher hopes to ignore our call for help. After all, what we do on a daily basis doesn't affect you. You guys have isolated offices away from inmates, and your job has no real dangers like ours presents.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Gray. I joked the other day with my coworkers about using the time to stand up here and just cry in front of you, and they laughed, not because it was funny, but because they understood. They understood the tiredness of being overworked and overwhelmed, the frustration of having to work a shift alone instead of having a partner, working 12 straight hours of constantly being on your feet doing a job you used to take two or three people to do, but now we need to figure out how to do it and survive the day. When I first started in corrections, I learned from the experience of senior officers who had 10-plus years' experience on the field. I had two partners I worked with on the female housing units. It took three people to run the unit smoothly due to all that goes on in the day. The female unit is everything the branch does in 12 units, but we do it in one. Now, I am the 10-year officer experience, and I'm working with the exact, the exact same unit that I started on only have to do with no partners. Why? Because they all left. Because who wants to do a job that they can work at Amazon or Buc-E's for the same amount of pay? Why would you want to come here where your life is threatened daily, where you have to constantly be on guard because you may get into a fight or be stabbed while walking in the block, where you get spit on or bit on? Because that happened to me twice this weekend. We continue to be short-staffed, but it continues to be hidden. You see, every time multiple people leave, posts are magically taken off the roster to make it look like we don't need these posts or the people. Then they just use who was working that day to magically fill the disappeared spots. But that creates us to lose a partner on a post or creating us to work double that day or alone. You are being shown a roster that looks filled, you are not being shown what it takes, what it looked like years ago when we had more people and more posts. I'm currently working in a building with seven officers. Four officers occupy the dorms, and one occupies mental health, and I'm the one on Northway. We continue to use, we continue to house 400 inmates in my building. If an officer are in danger, that leaves us one person who can respond to save them. That means if all of us are in danger, no one can respond because we are not allowed to abandon our posts, making the inmates priority over us at that moment. Think about that, and why? Because we are short-staffed, because new people come in, and they see how the danger and the frustrations, and they see it in their P checks, and it's not worth it, and they leave. I'm an FTO who trains new people, and I can tell you the most leave within the first or second day because they see what is happening and it's not worth it to them. Some go on to another county to do the same for more money, and we can't blame them, but we stay. We stay for each other because we have built a family with our brothers and sisters in our second home. If you see who is here today, it's not the new because they have left, or they planned on leaving so they don't care. We care. We care to fight, and we stay for higher pay and multiple jobs we are doing to make corrections survive. Let me ask you, if you had a known murderer knocking at your front door, would you open it? If you had local drug dealers or gang members asked to come into your home, would you let them? How would you, how much would it cost for you to be paid to let them in that door? Because we do it, and we do it daily, sometimes up to 100 times a day with two people, most posts because we are short-staffed, because three to four people who should be with them right now are helping other units.
Good morning. My name is Officer Clark. I've been with the county for six years. When I first started, everybody would ask me if I was worried or scared about my job, and to be honest, I wasn't. 20 seconds is all we had before we had, if we had to call a code, 20 seconds. We had to fight for 20 seconds, that's it. Now, it's three to four minutes, and usually, in the, at least on the female area, who house murderers, killers, mental health patients that don't feel pain, mental health patients that see me as the enemy, mental health patients that are going through whatever they're going through, and they're coming at me, and they're coming at me to kill me. Three to four minutes. Most of the time, ID next door gets to us before any other officer in our building because there is no one. The other day, we had no lieutenant. We had two sergeants on Northway. We had one person in H Block, which is a mental health one, and then we had four of the dorm people. There was an incident, an attack against an officer. No one could go anywhere, no one could respond because two officers were on break. You know who got there first? Next door, four minutes. So if that guy wanted to kill that officer, that officer would have been dead. Luckily enough, it was sustained. My kids know, I go to work every day knowing I might die. My kids know that, too. There are wills. I have a three-year-old, I have a 12-year-old, 19-year-old, and a 22-year-old. They know that I might not come home. Every day, I go to work knowing that I might not come home. It's a realistic expectation of my life. And I risk that for $22 an hour? Not only that, you have us working so hard. I like to work. I'm an overachiever, I love working, but you have us doing it daily. You have us doing two, three people jobs, sometimes four people jobs. We are taking care of the two officer full restraints by ourselves. Two officers means that they have attacked us, they have tried to kill us. It is not just babysitting, it is them trying to take away our lives. They don't have anything to lose. And we do, my kids do. And you guys, I really honestly don't believe that anything's going to happen until one of us dies, and more than likely, it's going to be a female. It's a lot easier to overtake me than to overtake them. Even when I was working a male unit, it was 132 against one female. You think they couldn't take us? And we still had 60, 70 seconds before somebody comes and helps us? What kind of damage can 32 to 108 people do to one female officer? We used to have two people per unit. We have one. We don't get breaks. We need something, we need more people. I want to go home and see my kids, just like you guys do.
Good morning. Excuse me. My name is Tim DeCintron, I'm a senior officer at the Volusia County Division of Corrections. I'm going on 16 years of service, and I'm starting to wonder if I have the fight to finish my career with the Division of Corrections. Throughout my career, I've experienced many obstacles: excessive overtime, staffing issues, threats, false allegations, false write-offs, hiring freeze, no raises, no compression, no merit raises, and surely many other things I'm just not able to remember at this time. I thought of my career wondering if this was something I really wanted to get myself into. The things that helped me were experienced staff to show support, the camaraderie between fellow officers, the leadership guiding the way, and having the time off to collect yourself from the stress from the job, this job creates. These things collectively made me feel comfortable, safe, and gave me the motivation to want to excel and make this my career. With no disrespect to my fellow peers, things are definitely not like this anymore. When I go to work now, it's more like how are we going to cut corners to get through the day or night? The staff got a lot, lot younger and less experienced. The leadership is fading because they are being treated like they are just another number. These issues lead to major staffing concerns. Staff feels unsafe, not appreciated, and stressed, and eventually feel the need to move on or just quit, not even worried about the resulting consequences. The strong core that once existed is now totally obsolete. We need to find a way to acknowledge senior staff and use their experience to guide these younger officers. Compression is something that will show worth and value to someone who has put in their time and expressed loyalty to a profession only few would consider. I feel that the county needs more enticing offers to bring in legitimate officers. Hiring bonuses like the surrounding counties are offering, better leave time, paid education, are some ideas that could potentially be thrown out there. The county is failing to find solutions to these ongoing problems. These consistent failures are coming at the expense of current staff, and I am strongly concerned that we will eventually all be burnt out or have no one left. Staff is tired, mistakes are happening, use of forced numbers are increasing, and fingers are being pointed. Something needs to be done because our staff is becoming a serious issue, and inmates are becoming aware of our diminishing numbers. Paying staff what they're worth, compressing pay fairly, retention and hiring bonuses are just starting points to bring Volusia County Corrections back to the solid place of employment it once used to be. Small intelligent changes now will solidify the experience we have and hopefully bring in quality staff we are so desperately in need of. Thank you for allowing me to address my concerns and possible solutions.
Hi, I'm Sergeant Cintron. I currently work for the Volusia County Department of Corrections and have been employed since 2012. I just want to know, how can you determine my worth, my value? You don't know what I know. You don't know my work ethic, the blood, sweat, and tears that I pour into my job, the time away from my family, the missed holidays, my baby's sick days, the "Mom, I really want you to stay" days. For what? What am I sacrificing for? A retirement one day that I may not even get to live to enjoy. Correction staff, like all law enforcement officers, face constant physical risks as well as lesser-known mental health risks. 34% of corrections officers suffer from post-traumatic stress disorder compared to 14% of military veterans. The suicide rate of corrections officers is twice as high as that of police officers and the general population. In fact, the suicide risk for corrections officers is 39% higher than that of all professions put together. Given these statistics, the average life expectancy of a corrections officer is 59 years compared to the national average of 75, per the Journal of Ethics. You are probably going to live to 75. Me, probably not so much. We all have committed to this career, and I feel that the county of Volusia is letting us down. Out of the 67 counties in the state of Florida, per FDLE's website, Florida Department of Law Enforcement, Volusia County is number nine in arrests, and that is as of 2020. We are number nine, but we are paid like we are 59. Our workload has not changed since we have previously declared to you how short-staffed we are. If anything, it has only gotten worse. We are also number 15 of the 67 counties in this state for daily population of inmates, and that is as of August of 2023. And that's per the Florida Department of Corrections website. We now show up to do the work of two or more officers, depending on how much workload we can carry without breaking. The public and the people who sit behind desks still think that everything is running smooth and A-OK because we can manage one more day without an incident, but for how much longer? What happens when there is an incident, a major one at that? Are you going to be able to be the one to tell my babies that I'm not coming home? I want the same thing as every other corrections officer that's right here with me today. I want to be paid what I'm worth and for the sacrifices that I am making and for the effort that I put in. So my biggest question to you is where's my 15% raise? The two wardens were able to secure themselves a 10% raise, followed by another 5%. While one of them has most, multiple open hostile work environment claims against him, the captains, lieutenants, sergeants, officers are considerably underpaid in comparison to the workload that we are required to complete daily and with limited staff. I want the same consideration that the wardens received in terms of pay. We are the ones running the building on a daily basis when most of them aren't even in it. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, council. I'm Sergeant Nicholas Barnavitz. I've been with the Division of Corrections for eight years. I got into corrections because a lot of my close families and friends were in there, and they loved the job. They raved to me about how awesome it was, and such a great place to work, and a lot of them did retire from there. And now, to the current, staff is at the lowest we've ever seen it. Morale, it's rock bottom. As you can see, for all the ladies and gentlemen standing behind me, we're standing united. We've unionized, we're looking for help. We need assistance. Staff is beat down, they're exhausted. Every year, we have less and less staff working, but we're still required to conduct the exact same amount of duties. At this point, that our staffing is no longer sufficient to run a jail. Inmates are not provided with proper care, custody, and control that they deserve. Inmate programs and recreation are routinely canceled. Lockdowns, as they said, are initiated. Tasks completely go unfinished sometimes, we just can't do it with the staffing we have. As with lockdowns, like they stated, inmates are locked into their cell for up to 18 hours a day. That just causes anger and outrage from them. They want to retaliate against us, they really can't handle being locked in their cell, and nor should they have to. And that's a staffing issue. Our pay, like they said, it's not comparable to other counties. We understand that. With negotiations, we've heard a lot about pay, and that is open to discussion, we understand that. But I ask you, is it safe for one officer to oversee 142 inmates? It's not, but that's what we're tasked to do every single day. So, if you look throughout the nation, jails and prisons alike, all have staffing issues. What is Volusia County doing to incentivize bringing people here? That's the question we've all asked you today. So we're here today again, once again, to ask for help. We need staff, we need incentives to hire new staff and retain staff.[1701.58]